All right, thank you. So at this point, we're going to open the meeting for public hearings. This is specifically regarding the property at 29401 Stevenson. So if there's anyone here who would like to talk regarding that, this is your opportunity to do so. I invite you to come up to the podium. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bill Davis. I'm one of the owners and developers of the project. Hope you can hear me. This is our project architect, Stuart Fein.
Stuart Fein.
Yes. Hope you could see the site plan in your packet. We did bring along a rendering in color of the facade of the building. So exactly as stated, it's proposed to be a self-storage facility, and you've heard some of the details. So I'll just be brief with a couple of highlights. There's a mix of climate-controlled units, interior and exterior access, and a range of sizes, 25 square feet to 400 square feet. And the building's in landscaping form, a perimeter around the main yard, and so they conceal the views of doors and activities of customers on the site for the most part. The landscaping is proposed to be updated to city code, as well as the architecture and the finished materials, which will be brick and then some architectural-grade galvanized steel. So in addition to requesting special approval use, we're also requesting a variance from ZBA that was mentioned. So the parking requirement is about 25% of the ordinance requirement. And we found in our own data, we've developed three other storage facilities, that the actual usage is considerably less than what's in the ordinance. And we provided the Development Review Committee with some data to that effect, and also data from National Traffic Control manuals, and that proved out that quantity. So I want to reassure you that that variance has been granted at that quantity for other similar uses, and that it's been successful. And then lastly, the operation of the property is planned to be professionally managed by a large operator that we work with called Hub Smart. They manage over 600 properties nationally, and they do an excellent job. And we've had a great experience with them in La Bonia, Sterling Heights, and Ann Arbor. And then lastly, there continues to be a demand for self-storage by customers. The average utilization has incrementally gone up year after year, to the point where it's now about 12% of the population constantly using storage in their lifestyle. And so not only have we studied the market, we've had a third-party feasibility group, and we believe there is sufficient demand for the units to be absorbed in a reasonable amount of time. And so we're here to answer any questions you may have about the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions anyone on council has? And can I just request, because the people who are sitting here can't see, can you just show them? Thank you. Any questions from anyone on council? Discussion from council? Any members of the public who had any questions? Any?
Where exactly is this one?
Ma'am, if you could come up to the podium, please. Thank you. It's about 12 and 1/2.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. I see where this is.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? I'm going to close this portion of public comment, then. If council has no questions, then... Mrs. Marsh, can you restate this? I believe that we're looking for approval from council dependent on the ZBA. Is that correct?
Yes. Contingent upon the applicant receiving the parking variance from the ZBA on August the 5th.
Your Honor, there is one more contingency, and that is the applicant shall provide a second access for emergency vehicles either to the north or to the south. They said that they would address that issue later on, but that should be a condition.
Okay, so I just want to confirm. Address means that you will be adding this second?
Yes, we're working with the neighbor to the south, who has a paved lot and access, and we believe they'll provide an easement, and then we'll be all set. If not, we'll work on the north side. But yes, we do commit to that second access.
Okay, and you understand that if we approve this this evening, it is contingent on the ZBA? And if they do not approve it, then it becomes null?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. Anyone on council, any other comments?
Who is the... I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett, please.
Who is the adjacent neighbor that you're negotiating with on that?
So that's the Ferber Warehouse.
Which one?
Ferber Warehouse to the south.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And they've got a lease with another party, and so that's why it's taking a little longer to move out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else on council? All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please...
There's no...
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm sorry, apologies. Getting back to this. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Please.
Your Honor, I move that the council grant use variance for the property at 29401 Stevenson. Two contingencies. One is the approval of the ZBA for waiver of parking spaces. Additionally, per the request of staff, addressing the second access for emergency vehicles at the site.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Ms. Griffstein.
Ms. Gettings.
I'll support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion from council? All right.
Your Honor, did council member Corbett indicate that it's contingent on those conditions?
Not two, two contingencies. He did.
So it's special approval.
Special approval.
Special approval, okay.
Okay.
I would change that language, special approval, I suppose.
Mr. Gettings, you concur with special approval?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on council? All right, seeing how there's no further discussion, all in favor of this special approval pending the two contingencies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. You've granted your special approval pending contingencies. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right. Okay. We are still waiting for the bike rodeo presentation that will be happening. So we're going to move on to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone in the public to come and speak. Ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Please give us your name and any identifying... any way you identify yourself with the city. Please, sir, go ahead. The floor is yours. Should we... Perhaps we can let someone else see if there's someone else who wants to speak, and you can come next? Is that okay?
I'll still be on record. Sheriff Rotman Richard Claire Taylor Joe Longo is among people who is in discrimination of case number OO62694, violating Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Sheriff Richard Joe Winkminded Burnett Jones is among people who is showing fear to testify to legal jurors in legal cases for Peter Richard Taylor, people including Sheriff Richard Joe Burnett, and legal zoos, public trial in year 2021, 43rd District Court of Madison Heights. Peter is me, who is a owner of knowledge that case number OO6294 is placed brutality, proving Mike Blanchard is corrupt, violating amendment eight, nor cruel and unusual punishments inflicted of Constitution for United States, showing Mike is peoples... Mike is in peoples' fear.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Jennifer Zemarslick, 649 East Harwood. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here for a third time, giving notice to the mayor and city council members that I am still being censored in social media by a council member. I have spoken at the last two city council meetings regarding the censorship activity of this council member. I have not been contacted by this city council member for any change or removal of the block on social media, nor asked verbally or in writing to discuss the matter. I was never notified as to why I was blocked and censored at any time, nor any discussion of the matter has ever been addressed with me before, during, or after the event regarding this council member. I've been asking questions of other residents in our city, and it seems hundreds of residents are being blocked by this council member. As we move forward on this issue, I would submit to our mayor and city council members that an action be made once again to make an additional change to our city charter regarding social media and how our elected officials and paid staff can use social media, which affects public discourse in our city. It is currently on the agenda today for a resolution to create a charter revision study committee. I submit now my formal request regarding social media be added to the advisory discussions, and I will also include a formal request for a code of conduct to be addressed as well. I most assuredly recognize the difficulty our city officials have in addressing conduct issues. It is not stated on our charter on how to handle ethics issues. Our city charter, which is rule of law as to how you manage and regulate any city business, gives you basically nothing to stand on or work with as language from our charter when unusual situations come up. Madison Heights has never had a code of ethics in our city charter. However, it is an addition that is very popular in other municipalities, and the Michigan Municipal League has brought forth great suggestions. Perhaps this would mitigate all the issues at hand regarding conduct currently happening, and may reduce the pressure of any one esteemed council member and mayor to stand against another mayor outside of the current charter as it stands. As a resident and taxpayer for about 27 years, I submit my appeal to an open discussion, most importantly, about a code of ethics and about social media and public discourse. I am always available for further discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening, public comment? You may hand it to me, please, and I will give it to...
I ran out of yellow leads.
That's fine, thank you.
As a member of the HR... Oh, Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. As a member of the HREC, we had discussed people with disabilities, and autism came up. I was shocked by what I didn't know about this disease. I told those families I wouldn't forget them, and I won't. What you have is a sticker that is being purchased by my husband and myself as a gift to these families in the city and to our police, so that it can be placed on a vehicle, so that when the officer approaches said vehicle, he or she sees there's somebody possibly in the car that has this disability, making them think, stop, wait, let's see, you know, be more... what's the word? Not sympathetic, but just paying maybe more attention to the actions of people in the vehicle. And I wanted this for the family, so they know that I don't forget them, I won't forget them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Covert. Is there anyone else this evening who wishes to address council?
Good evening, council. Amy Lewis, Madison Heights, 27097 Palmer. I wanted to speak up and back up Ms. Marzak's words, and I wanted to read you this. This is right from the ACLU. "It is important to remember that people who hold public office can wear two hats. Sometimes they act as private individuals, and other times they are government actors. While they maintain their First Amendment rights when acting as private individuals, they are subject to the limits of the First Amendment that the First Amendment places on the government whenever they're doing government work or presenting as a government actor. The court recognized that when a public official uses a Facebook page as a tool of governments, that is, when she uses it to inform the public about her government work, solicits input on policy issues through the page, and sways it with, quote, 'in the trappings of her office,' end quote, she's controlling the page as a government actor. This creates a public forum. And if she opens that page to public comment, the interactive space of the Facebook page constitutes a public forum. The fact that the page exists on a website owned by a private company doesn't change that, or a private individual. This means that when a public official blocks critics from the page because of their viewpoints, she violates the Constitution. Indeed, the right to criticize the government is at the heart of the First Amendment. The court specifically recognized blocking as an infringing of that right. Elsewhere around the country, public officials have also stopped censoring critics on their social media pages thanks to the work of the ACLU. These cases help to ensure that our First Amendment rights remain protected as our democracy increasingly moves online. As a matter of fact, the ACLU states that we are way behind with laws in compared to keeping up with online, you know, laws with that, with maintaining a decent decorum. The fact that a public official disagrees with you on an issue doesn't mean she can silence you. Indeed, it means the opposite, and that holds true when you're speaking out at a public park, at a town hall meeting, or a Facebook page. I, too, encourage the city to establish a code of conduct for those who serve our citizens. Thank you."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak this evening?
Hello, I'm going to change gears. My name is Vita Palazzolo, 250 East 13 Mile. Mayor, council, and I'm saddened that Emily's not here, because I'm directing some of this to her. I wanted to thank Emily for jumping on a Facebook page that was discussing part of my comment that I made at the last city council meeting a couple of weeks ago. This is in regards to the senior home that's building on Dequender. First of all, thank you, all of you, for doing some due diligence. I appreciate that. I have one question for council. When will you make this known publicly? Because in this thread, people were asking about the cost of the rooms, why is it not based on your income? And Emily saw that, and she was able to provide some information that was spoken here a couple of weeks ago. So I appreciate her doing that for the public. But again, I personally believe that it's a responsibility of our council to make that either an announcement on a page, and even maybe an apology, because you had an awful lot of seniors looking forward to, you know, putting their names on a waiting list, and it's very, very discouraging. The last thing I want to say is, I know that... I don't know if it's true, but there was hearsay that the HREC presented some ideas to the council about affordable homes and whatnot for the future. I would just ask that you would keep your ears perked and look for some foxes in the grass, because I really don't want my senior years to be socialized, and Section 8 is really, really a terrible way to go for our city unless it's done correctly. I've looked into it, believe me, and it's very hard. It's very hard, and it's very corrupt. So please keep your ears open, and I pray that the HREC does the same thing. And once again, please don't socialize, my retirement and anybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to comment this evening?
Good evening, council. My name is Jeremy. I live at 25719 Miracle Drive. It's the same weather we've been having, right? I've been a resident of the city, living at the same address for about five and a half, six years now. About four years ago, there was a storm drain restoration repaving project that went on on the street that goes behind my house, Dave Road. There's also been several other streets in my neighborhood that have had this repaving project, big signs, "We're not salting this road, we use sand." I love the sand, by the way. I get way better traction in the crappy winter wet months. Thank you for that. My problem, however, is this. You replaced all the storm drains with these tiny, tiny, little holes. How many of those storm drains do you think are on the Dave Street alone? I'll tell you, there's three, each one with eight holes. I have more than that on the one outside my house, like 40 feet away. So when we have weather events like what we had on Saturday, what we had is a whole street, about three-tenths of a mile, that's not draining. So all that water comes over onto my street. I had three cars stalled out at the intersection of Miracle and Hudson Saturday night. I was up over my ankles while standing on my sidewalk. I felt the need that I should probably put a no-wake-zone sign in my front yard. I failed to see how that made our storm drain system better. And it's not just that street, there's several other streets in the neighborhood where the same thing happens. On Lincoln, west of Wolverine, the same thing has been made. About half a mile of roadway there, and I counted four set storm drains. That simply just is not enough. It doesn't take much water for that to fill up at all. It'd be the equivalent of you taking a piece of duct tape over your shower drain at home and poking one hole right in the middle with a pencil, but still take your 10-minute hot shower every night to see how long your bathroom lasts. I was wondering what plans there are to maybe fix the situation. I'm almost at the point where, like, it never flooded the first two years. There were people on my street with pool floats the other night. Last summer, we had half-inch rain, my car flooded. My car flooded. I still have water damage inside my car from it flooding. It shouldn't happen. Saturday, I moved my car to higher ground, because I was afraid it was coming up my driveway, and it was. I was wondering if there's any plans to fix this, or maybe not do it on the rest of the streets, because apparently I only have the only street in the neighborhood that drains water now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak this evening?
Good evening. Colleen Porter, I reside at 30223 Longfellow Avenue. The reason I'm here tonight is, at the Juneteenth celebration, they had a tent available. I'm not exactly sure what they referred to it as. At my house, we call it a safe spot. What it is, is it's a calming tent. I'm a mother of... I have a son that has sensory processing disorder, and it was just so wonderful that they provided this opportunity for my little guy. He can get overstimulated very easily, and I just would strongly encourage that those who are planning future events in the city, that if they could consider having one of those safe-spot calming tents available, it would be much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close this portion of the meeting. Chief Haynes, are we ready for the presentation? All right, thank you. So up next, we're going to have the presentation of the bicycle rodeo winners. Chief Haynes.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for stalling as long as we possibly could till we got the bikes here this evening. That would have been really disappointing to do a presentation without bicycles. So I do appreciate that. In any event, this year, we had our bicycle rodeo back on June the 5th, and we had an excellent turnout this year, even as, you know, we were getting away from all the COVID restrictions. We had a great turnout, kids had a really good time, police officers had a great time as well, blending and being with our community. So tonight, we're here to give away the bikes that are being presented from the police department. And I'll first introduce Sheila, who is the general manager at our Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union here in Madison Heights. They are the ones that supplied the funding this year, again, as they always do almost every year, to purchase the bikes that we're going to give away tonight. So I'll have Sheila come up and say a few words.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union is a caring organization committed to promoting the financial success of our members and the communities in which we live and work. Every year, each branch is given the opportunity to donate $1,000 to a local government or community group, and the Madison Heights branch once again chose the Madison Heights Police Department and their bike rodeo as our recipient. On behalf of Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union and its Board of Directors, we thank the Madison Heights Police Department for their work in the community, and offer a big congratulations to this year's bike winners.
All right, and I must mention, we do have the bikes here. Obviously, they're from D&amp;D Berkeley, or I'm sorry, D&amp;D Bicycle in Berkeley. They also have a booth at our open house every year where they do bike repairs on scene, they replace flat tires, air tires up, adjust seats, all that kind of good stuff. So they do that as their volunteerism, and then they also provide us with really good pricing on the bikes. And again, the credit union has been amazing over these past few years in buying the bikes, because these are not the cheap bikes. These are really nice, quality bikes that will last these kids until they're ready to move up to the next size, right? So without further ado, if I could have Carson and his family come on up. Yeah. He's ready to go. And if I could have Elena and her family come on up? We know Elena is very shy. We just want to make sure that she gets her bike. Once again, very nice bikes, and they come with a three-year warranty and all the maintenance for the next three years. So thanks to our sponsors, Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union and D&amp;D Bikes in Berkeley, and thank you, mayor and council, for allowing us to have this presentation this evening.
Great, thank you, chief. Thank you, chief, and congratulations to the bike winners. All right, so back on track, next up is communications. First one is Sean Force, the resignation from the Human Relations and Equity Commission. Mrs. Marsh, should I report?
Sean Force has submitted her resignation to the Human Relations and Equity Commission. Staff recommends that city council accept this resignation and declare the seat vacant.
All right, thank you. Is... what is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I move to accept the resignation of Sean Force from the Human Relations and Equity Commission and leave the seat vacant.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, so this is another devastating loss for our boards and commissions. Sean Force was a force, and that is not a coincidence that her name is that. She was doing great things with the Human Relations and Equity Commission in trying to create a community that was accessible to everyone. She left for a reason why a lot of our very profound, intelligent, and very productive leaders are leaving these boards and commissions, and that is because they are being targeted on the internet and both within the city government, and they are being sabotaged intentionally. And it's really sad, because there are a lot of amazing things happening in the community. We have the food pantry, we have mutual aid, we have pollinator gardens everywhere, we have the arts board doing... We have the arts board doing music festivals. The love that's in the air in this community is undeniable. And it's because of these people who take these leadership positions in our community. And it's shameful to see them go when they don't want to see them go. I'm going to ask my members of City Council, yes, to accept this resignation, but to consider members who have been placed on boards and commissions that are causing serious issues and causing losses of incredible leaders within our community. I ask that you consider removing them from these boards and commissions so that we can continue to do great things without that targeting happening to us. So I will vote in favor to accept the resignation of Sean Force. But I don't do it respectfully, and I don't do it without pain and confusion and infuriating frustration of the people that sit here today.
Thank you, is there any other discussion from any council members? All right, and I just, I'd like to make an amendment, if that's okay. I don't think that you mentioned the proclamation that we generally send out. Would that be appropriate to send her our thanks? All right, all right, thank you. And support agrees as well? The seat was declared vacant, but I didn't hear that we would be sending the proclamation of thanks.
Well, you could ask the motion maker to amend the motion to add it. And then, no, that was her. And then, and then ask the person who seconded it whether he would agree with that amendment.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. So a motion has been made and seconded to receive this resignation. Is there any discussion from council? All right, I would just like to throw out my two cents on this. Sean Force was very, very helpful to me. A couple of months ago, I had a parent who reached out to me. It was a situation I had, I was not able to, I didn't have the education, I didn't have the resources. It was a situation with the school and their child being misgendered. And she asked me if I could help, and I was not able to. But I did, I did reach out to Sean. And within minutes of speaking with Sean Force, she sent me contact. She was, to say she was helpful, she was more than helpful. She, you know, anything that you need, any kind of, kind of issue like this, if you need another resource, I'm happy to talk to the parent. So I very much appreciated that. And so, so yes, it's, it is sad to see her leaving. But I do believe that she will still be helpful in the community. And I do hope that should I run into another situation like that, that she will be helpful again. So she goes with, with my thanks as well. And if there is no further discussion, then all in favor of accepting the resignation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those against say no. All right, the resignation has been accepted, thank you. Up next, we have reports. D1 from the City Manager, the park and facility naming policy. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, Councilwoman Bliss has requested that staff create a parks and facilities naming policy. Based on feedback from City Council, a policy is being presented tonight that would open the nomination process to all city boards and commissions, City Council members, and staff. Criteria has been included to determine who could be considered. For example, a person deceased more than two years who provided exceptional service in the interest of the park system as a whole or for the community as a whole. A person living that has contributed extraordinary service and no less than ten years of service to the city. Also, such recommendations shall be submitted no later than November of each year for council consideration during that year's upcoming council workshop, which is typically held in March. City Council would make any final determinations on to changing names.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt the new parks and facilities naming policy.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I support.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Bliss?
For those who are sitting out in the audience, this seems like a really small change, you know, to have a formal process to recognize those who gave so much to the community. And in theory, you wouldn't need it, right? You'd be able to just recognize everybody as they come. But without a, without a formal policy, a lot of really deserving people have slipped through the cracks. There's a lot of folks on that wall back there who made our city as great as it is. And I want to make sure that we have the capacity to not just recognize those folks, you know, retroactively, but also those that continue to serve our city going forward. Honestly, I hope we can do as many of these living as possible so that that person and their family can be there to celebrate that, that naming. You know, and it doesn't have to be a park. It could be a room inside, inside the library, it could be a room inside City Hall, it could be a hallway. But let's give a little bit of credit and respect to the people that helped build this city. And I'd also like, as a part of that, and I, I know that this is, you know, part of the plan, but we should have a plaque letting people know what that person did in the city. We have some parks that are named, but I don't know that anybody in the general public would be able to tell why Rosie's Park is named Rosie's Park. There are exceptions, but, but for the most part, I think our, our history, it has a way of slipping away from us if we don't take control of it. And this is a step in that right direction for us to make sure that we're honoring those and showcasing all the great work that is done to make our city what it is today. That's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Bliss. Is there any other discussion, any other comments by council?
Your Honor. And now for the other side of the thought. And I'm not 100% sure I'm against the, the policy. Somewhere in the next two minutes, I'm sure I'll figure that out. But, but, but the problem is, is that this is, as you say, one of those things that kind of gets lightly sometimes, you know, passed over. But this can also be very contentious. And try saying no for some reason. Try saying no for any reason to a family that comes up and says, my uncle, my father, maybe it should have been for something else. Maybe they should be recognized in some other way. I will tell you, based on not personal knowledge, but for about 40 years, the council and the administration tried to stay away from this as much as it could, exactly for that reason. Now, when you get up here, we got different reasons for why we don't want to answer certain questions. But, but it also is very tough to look at a family and say, well, you know, your brother was a fine man, or your sister was a great woman and contributed a lot to the city, but really didn't have anything to do with this park. So are you going to take a personal when I say no to you? Not, not, I'm not saying no to them, no to their accomplishments, I'm saying no to this proposal. So I guess, although there have been some cases, I think, that we clearly would all say, now wait a minute, they should have been recognized, and preferably now while they know about it. I would hope that, that however this is constructed in terms of the preliminary evaluation, the committee that looks at it and so on, that there's a way to convey to families, to friends, to organizations. This is not an automatic yes, and we may look to substitute another idea than the one you've come to us for. No disrespect to your, to the person, but it's, it's very, it's very, very touchy. And, and we've had a few incidents over the years, so I'll support it. But I really hope that, that this doesn't get used as often as it is. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Anyone else have any comments? Council, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, so when it was brought up, I'm like, of course, let's name the parks after everybody. And I didn't even stop to think about it in the way that Mr. Corbett just represented it. And then I started thinking, like, we've planted our roots here in the city, but I've only lived here about 10 years. And how much nostalgia is behind the names of the parks that is already there? How many childhoods are tied to those names? I only know Rosie's as being an infamous park because we live close to it. So, you know, we got to hear all the stories and stuff. But like, how many of our parks are like that? My kids are growing up at Wildwood Park now, and like, it's a very recognizable park. So I would second guess it too, not, not that I would have even thought to, but like, I know that my kids are now tying their childhood memories to these parks as they are. Is that an issue with the community? Do they care? Do they hold those near and dear? Is that something we should put out there and maybe get a feel for before we make a vote on it? Because I would say, like, I would, I don't know the community enough to make a change like that. But I do know lots of people I'd like to name parks after.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of quick clarifications. This is any facility, it could be a section of a park, it could be over by where one bench is without naming a full park. It just gives us as a council the ability and a formal process to evaluate that. And it's kind of, you know, I see it as like a Hall of Fame ballot. You know, if somebody is submitted, they'll stay on that list for consideration. And this is also enabling, any of our city boards could put forth a name. I expect Historical Commission would probably be very active in that. But you might be able to see the same thing with, you know, Parks and Rec or the Active Adult Center for, you know, people who are outstanding that that board, you know, was, you know, invested in and very much aware of. And it also gives staff the opportunity, as well as members of council, to put the name in. But then from there, you know, we're, it's our job as a council, as a part of the strategic planning process, which is why this is built the way that it is. It's our job to determine, you know, which person that year, and then what are we naming? So I don't anticipate we're going to be renaming a bunch of parks. But you could have a section of a park, much like what we did with Mr. Zerugian right in the corner of Civic Center Park, to be able to honor a longtime volunteer and, you know, longtime employee who gave a lot of time, effort, and, and just caring into the city. It's just a small section of the park, I think it's called Zerugian Way. And so I think you see a lot more of that, but not wholesale changes of a park's name.
Thank you.
One last question.
Sorry, just, it's Grove, and just, I've seen him out there watering, so. Please go ahead.
Not that we would ever run into an issue, but because we're seeing it so much in history now, are we going to do any, like, due diligence background into the person being named to make sure that it's not going to turn out to be problematic in the future? We're not like finding ourselves renaming something because we didn't look into it deep enough? Like, I guess that's what we have to look at. And I, not to say that that would even be an issue in the city, but that is now something that we need to look into. Would that be written into it in consideration of anybody having a park named after them? Doing some due diligence on their background?
I would think when we have the conversation in March, you know, I don't see us renaming existing parks. I don't see us saying, well, we're going to get rid of XYZ Park and now name it after, you know, ABC person. I think it would be, as Councilwoman Bliss said, this section here. I was thinking of Ed Swanson, and he has a bench. So I was thinking something like that, or the Margine and Scott, Margine and Jack Scott Room for the Historical Commission. I was thinking something like that, not so much taking a park that, that everyone knows as this and changing the name. And so I think that, you know, this discussion would happen. Someone would say, I'd like to put up a bench, or put up a grove, or however, or name this room after ABC person. There would be discussion. And at that point, if someone knew of a reason why we should not be naming this room after ABC person, there would be a discussion about it. So that would alleviate your concern. And I think, Mr. Corbett, that would also, well, yours is a bit different, because you're right. You're right, it is a bit different. I mean, you can never make everybody happy, and that's where I guess it comes down to a vote. If someone had what they feel is a legitimate reason that they are voting no for naming this room after ABC person, then that's their right to vote no. And if everyone else says, I want to name it after ABC person, then that's their right.
The only, Your Honor, the only thing is, there is no legitimate reason why you voted no on my father, sister, brother, whoever it is that I'm.
Right.
But, which is the problem, but, yeah, I, I think we should think smaller rather than bigger and, and, yeah. Well, all right. Door's open, so.
Okay, and I have to just say, when we did the fitness court opening last month, I invited Bill Huffman's widow. And people said to me, oh, I didn't even realize this was named after, I didn't get that. I didn't understand that, I didn't know. Because, you know, people who didn't grow up with him, who never heard any of the stories, wouldn't have known that. Whereas, we were doing it at Huffman Park, it just didn't make sense to not invite the family. So, in my opinion, not everyone would have agreed with that, but in my opinion. So I will be voting to accept this, and I think the conversation will take place in, in March. Is there anyone else who, any comments? All right, all in favor of accepting this park and facility name policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all against say no. Motion carries, thank you. Next up, from the City Manager, a resolution to create a charter revision study committee. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Councilmembers Rubeck and Clark have inquired about the process for changing several items in our current city charter. These items include the procedures for appointing council when there is a vacancy, resigning from council to run for mayor, and appointing mayor pro temp. These matters would first have to be referred by City Council to the Charter Revision Committee to review, draft revisions, and recommend approval or denial to City Council. The Charter Revision Committee was revised in 2019 and is now an ad hoc committee. In a lot of the topics to be discussed, legal counsel and I advise that the Charter Revision Study Committee would be more appropriate. The forming resolution is attached for your review. If City Council would like to consider moving forward with this item, the general steps would be to adopt the Charter Revision Group Resolution to formally form the study committee and refer specific areas in question to the study group. Next, you would appoint the study group members. The study group members will work with legal counsel to review, draft, and recommend approval or denial to City Council any proposed changes. City Council would consider the recommendation and vote to approve and deny. If approved, the wording would be finalized and submitted to the Attorney General for review and approval to be placed on an upcoming election's ballot, estimated to be November of 2022.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I move that we accept the resolution to create a Charter Revision Study Committee.
Thank you, is there support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Soltes?
Support.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, may I ask, how are people appointed to this committee? Are they, is it all mayor appointees? Is it, did you say it and I didn't?
Yeah, I didn't hear that, Your Honor.
How are people appointed to the committee?
Well, they're, according to the resolution, it's going to consist of seven members, the City Manager, the City Attorney, and five residents. Counsel would appoint the five residents as, as members.
So, because we have some committees where the mayor appoints everyone on it. So counsel would have, would have the say in who was appointed.
Right, now, there are some, there are some requirements, as you note in paragraph number four. And that is, the purpose of this committee is to be apolitical, meaning that the, that the appointee is not a candidate for mayor or council in the previous two election cycles, or a member of the mayoral or council members' board or staff. So it's meant to be a technocratic committee for the purpose of reviewing and drafting language.
I got to say, I really like those steps you put in place. I'm impressed with them. Thank you for answering.
Thank you. Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
I'll be voting no on the motion, and let me, we're not really discussing the underlying topics here that gives rise to this request. In other words, there were three items regarding filling council vacancies, whether or not a council member has to resign to run for mayor, and then the pro temp. Two of those three, I'm absolutely opposed to adoption. I believe they should stay in the charter and they belong there. They're also not what we're talking about right now. We're talking about simply forming the committee. So confining my comments to that, just so you don't think I completely lost my mind, that's why I'll be voting no. I'm opposed not so much to the forming of the committee, but to the ideas that are giving rise to it. And presumably, at some point in the future, we'll have a chance to discuss that further.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there any other discussion for council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I don't know that, that I have a problem with creating the Charter Revision Study Group. I, I think it's all about the execution, right? This Group. I, I think it's all about the execution, right? This, this is, you know, an amendment of our city's charter. Now, some of those things in the charter, as I understand it, and I guess one of my questions to legal is, does this limit the scope to just those three items? Or is our legal team able to put forward other changes as, you know, and is that committee able to put other changes up that we would be able to consider? Because as I understand it, there are many areas within our charter that have been effectively eliminated by state law. That should probably be removed. There are outdated things that are no longer relevant within the city. And so cleaning that up, I think, is potentially a benefit. This also has a timeline that it's not going to happen until, what, November 22 or something? So, we've got a lot of, a lot of time on it. But I am, I'm a little concerned as, as kind of the process and the how, you know, are these resident members, how do we define if they're apolitical? I see a definition in here, they couldn't have run for office in the previous two election cycles, or were a member of a mayor or candidate's board or staff. But is that paid? Is it volunteer? You know, what do we define if they've knocked on a door for a candidate? Does that make them political now, where they could not be in this? And so I guess those are my two questions. Is this limited in scope to only those three things, or can it be broadened? And second, how do we determine that they are apolitical or not as we go to appoint them? What is that definition?
Your Honor.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes. What is before council today is simply forming the committee. Nothing has been referred to the committee as of yet. Council would have to refer questions to the committee. And as I believe that there is one provision which says, "The Charter Revision Study Group shall carefully consider, accurately draft, and propose options for charter amendments referred to it by council." So, would half those issues that were raised by Councilmember Corbett would have to be specifically referred to the committee. So, this would be step number one. Step number two would be, we're trying to get apolitical members. That doesn't mean a person who hasn't cast a vote, who hasn't knocked on a door. It means that a person who hasn't been a candidate for mayor or council, or a person who hasn't been part of a, the mayor or a council member's campaign staff. So, we're not expecting people, non-voters, to be part of the committee, but people who have not been directly involved with either running for office or being a member of a campaign committee or staff. Your Honor?
Please.
My concern on that is, so this is, this is a small town, like, these are city council races in a small town. I can name maybe two candidates in the past 20 years who had a lot of paid staff. For the most part, that, that, I guess, board is not officially paid as staff. And so, I'm worried that we open up a can of worms where we, we now are appointing people to this apolitical board to change the charter, who may have all passed out literature for a particular candidate. And that, that concerns me, because we don't hire. So, it's not like we could point to that person and say, oh, well, they were working for such and such campaigns, so that disqualifies them. We don't have that. You know, it's not as direct, because, you know, our, our campaigns typically don't have a lot of paid staff, just given the size and scope of our election in our city.
Your Honor. I find it, and I approach it the same exact way. So, I find it telling that the very first, like, instinct of all of us is to be like, but how can they politicize this? We really need to think about, how is this going to get politicized, or twisted, or turned, or used for something? And I think that that's a concern for everybody here. And then my next reaction, after asking how everyone is appointed, I think of it, what an incredible opportunity for our community to actually become part of that process of building the city's charter. We can change so many things. We can get rid of so many barriers. We can create more accessibility and like really look at it. Not only that, but engage our residents in the decision-making process of, of all of these charters that have to be put in place. We saw Nick Taylor come here with his ideas for amending the, the animal ordinances. And I think it's a great initiative for people to take that sort of consideration and thought into how they would like to see their community shaped. So, I think the very first thought, I was like, well, how are they going to use this against something? That's the first thing that came to my head. And then the second thing was just like, how much good can we do with this opportunity? So, I'll be voting yes, in favor of the committee.
All right. Thank you. Is there any more? Please, Mr. Bliss.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Just, I think if we don't, if we don't discuss the unintended consequences before we move forward, that's when there's issues. And so, I don't see it as a negative that we're having a discussion of how this could potentially go wrong. I'd rather have the discussion of how it could potentially go wrong before we adopt it and it does go wrong. So, you know, I don't know if there's any way to, and maybe it's, it can be handled as we're going to appoint the members, but I would like to see that section be a little bit more detailed to prevent, you know, somebody who has been involved, and it could be somebody who's been involved in multiple of my campaigns, that does not hit the definition of apolitical, whether or not it's advantageous for me or for any other member. If we're trying to get an apolitical committee, we want somebody who hasn't participated outside of just casting a vote. And so, how do we limit that? How do we figure out what that definition is? Because they're not going to be campaign staff, and it's not as simple as whether or not they've run for office or got paid by, by an elected official.
Okay. Did you have something else, Councilwoman Clark?
I guess my next question would just be, like, I don't know what my own concerns are. But what are the concerns of having an elected official, like, let's draw the picture for everyone. What are the concerns of having an elected official have influence over a board like this?
Mr. Bliss. I don't, I don't...
Sure. Your Honor, could, could you please repeat the question? For some reason, our microphones are...
Yeah. So, we're talking about the rules outlining, like, not being able to be an elected official on this committee, or have worked for an elected official. If we could just, like, draw the picture of, like, why that is a concern? Why, why do we want to prevent that?
The, the purpose of the committee, as drafted in consultation with the administration, was to make it, as I indicated before, a technical committee, not a political committee. In other words, the committee is not going to dream up issues that it wants to present to council. Council has to refer issues to the committee, and the committee's job is to discuss and to draft. And it's a technical committee of technocrats, not, not political beings. So, council is going to be the one who controls the, the membership and the issues that are presented to the council. And two members would be the City Manager and the City Attorney. Our, you know, I, I, let me just say that I used to work for the attorney who incorporated this city in 1955. And that charter has really worked well for the city. And yes, it's outdated, and it needs to be tweaked here and there, but overall, it's been, it's been great. Unless the council decides, you know what, why don't you look into a, a whole new charter? That would be one issue. But right now, I think that what council, at least from what I've been hearing from council members, is we needed certain issues looked at and tweaked. And as a result of that, that's what the committee would do if those issues are referred to the, to the board. But right now, we're just, would be creating the committee. No issues have been referred to this committee. We're just creating it.
Your Honor.
Councilman Bliss.
Just as a specific example for Councilwoman Clark, if somebody worked for the campaign of somebody who placed in fourth place, and one of the discussion items is whether or not to automatically appoint the fourth-place council finalist into a council seat should there be a vacancy, there's an automatic conflict there. Yeah, whoever, that, like, whatever, they worked on that campaign, they knocked doors for that campaign, and you're up for the discussion of whether or not, you know, that's automatic, the fourth place goes up, or if there's other, you know, components of it. And I believe that's one of the requests that, that yourself and Councilor Rubeck put out as a potential discussion item. And so that's where I see the potential problem, is areas like that, where if they had worked for that campaign, they will be biased in one direction or the other, depending on where that person placed in the order.
Yeah. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
Actually, actually, what came to my mind was that scene from Casablanca where the police chief is putting the money in his pocket, saying, gambling? There's gambling in this room? What, there's politics in this process? Listen, if you're active on these boards and commissions, you obviously care about the community, and it's a short walk over to trying to help pick the people who are going to run it. That's just how it goes. Get over it. The, the, the thing I think that's important is, whatever decisions made is discussed openly, it's discussed publicly, it can be evaluated, and at the end of the day, the voters are going to make the decision. Hard stop. And I'll, I'll see you all when we get to the end of the line on this, on these particular issues. In the meantime, I'm not crazy with what's giving rise to it. That's my no vote. That was where I started that part of the conversation. But, yeah, okay, good luck with the no politics thing. Have fun.
All right. Is there anything, Mr. Sherman, did you have something?
Just last, the, the limitation on the membership is not that, that a member was not involved in politics, didn't cast a vote, didn't go door-to-door. The limitation, as drafted, specifically says not being a candidate for mayor or council in the previous two election cycles, or a member of a mayoral or council candidate's board or staff. Doesn't say paid staff. I know most people are not part of a paid staff and are volunteers. But doesn't prohibit someone who went door-to-door to say, I like Joe Smith, you should vote for Joe Smith. So, the, as drafted, and obviously, something could be, you know, amended and redrafted as well, but it, it doesn't assume that the person is completely apolitical and has never been involved in politics. Plus, there are seven members. So, even assuming you had one member who was somehow involved with candidate A, you have six other members who are there to vote as well. So, I think that, I understand, if you feel that it needs to be changed, that's one thing. But the way it's drafted takes into account that no one, none of us, among us are, is completely apolitical.
Your Honor.
Mr. Soltes.
I'm going to give my two cents. I've been sitting, listening. So, I, I mean, really, what this boiled down to, what I thought it brought, was brought up was because of two reasons, I think, as the attorney talked about, where a mayor pro, excuse me, when the, when a mayor resigns, does a mayor pro tem automatically take that position as mayor? I, for one, think that's, that's fair. I mean, it's in different levels of government. So, that was one of them. And the second one I thought was when, whether a person's going to run against the mayor, whether they would resign or not. I think, isn't that the premise of this whole study?
Those, those, Your Honor, those were questions that were raised. In addition, there was a third question. And the third question is, how council vacancies should be filled?
Right.
Whether by, is it the last vote, highest vote getter who lost in the preceding election, or is it by interview? But none of these questions have been referred to the committee. These have just been discussions by various members of the board. And the step number one, before we get to step number two and three, is to form the study group.
Right. Now, so the genesis was, was these type of issues, those three issues. And so, I, I think I like the way it's written, so I would be voting for it.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, concerns? All right. So, when I looked at this, and I saw the mayor council's candidate's board or staff in the previous two election cycles, I actually didn't interpret that as, well, I guess, the, the paid staff, someone paid for their campaign. But I took it as the candidate's board, or the, the mayor council's candidate's board. So, Councilwoman Clark said, are these going to be mayoral appointments? Are these going to be council appointments? And so, in my mind, anybody that I, as mayor, appointed to a board, or council appointed to a board, would automatically be disqualified. Is that not true then? You're talking specifically about their campaign, in which case I have a secondary question, which is, what is a candidate's board?
Committee. In other words, and, members of council will have to nominate people. But they'll have to nominate people, and they have to be seconded and then approved by the entire council. However, whoever is nominated, that council member has to realize that there are certain limitations here, meaning that it can't, it can't be a candidate who's, who's run for mayor or council in the last two cycles, and it can't be a member of a mayor, mayor or council member's committee.
Okay. Okay, so that it's not, so someone who I appointed to a board, but didn't actually help me with my campaign, is somebody who could be on this board, or this committee? This committee?
On the study committee. In other words, council members would put forward nominations, and they'd have to be seconded and approved by the entire council, just like we do on all boards and commissions. But it's not a mayoral appointment.
Right. No, I understand that.
Which, which simply means that the mayor nominates, and it's all subject to council approval anyway.
Right. I understand that. So, how do you know who's on a candidate's committee, political committee? I mean, there, there's no list. Just, just for those of you who don't know exactly how this whole process works, for mayor and council, we have to file paperwork. And most of the time, there is a treasurer that is, that's the only other candidate that I would know who's on the committee. And quite often, it's the actual member, or spouse, or a friend, or a family relative. So, no one would know who's on, like, that's the only person on their committee. Is that what you would be checking then?
Your Honor, we'd have applications, like we do for all the other boards and commissions, and that would be one of the questions. And they'd have to simply, you know, certify that the, the information they're providing is true and accurate. We're not going to, in other words, we accept applications for people who want to apply. And, and then from those applications, you can nominate people.
All right. I think I'm going to be voting no on this, just because this is a very, very gray area, because there are people who helped me during my campaign that I don't know that I would call them on my committee. I definitely didn't pay them. And I don't, I don't know. It just seems like a very gray area. And I guess I think I need a little bit more clarification on, on this.
Your Honor.
Please.
I'm, I'm inclined to do the same, but I do think this is a very important topic, and I generally support revisiting the charter. So, I, I would make a motion to table to the next meeting and give our legal team the opportunity to clarify that language and give us a couple more options to be able to bring it back to the next meeting.
A second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to table this till the next meeting, which will be August 9. The August 9th. All right.
Your Honor, could we have a roll call vote, please? On the motion to table.
Okay. So, the motion has been made to table this. Councilwoman Bliss has made the motion. Councilwoman Clark has seconded. And so now, we are going to have discussion, and then we will take a roll call vote. Point of clarification.
Your Honor.
Point of clarification. If you're going to postpone it to, I mean, if you're going to have a date certain, which is the next meeting, it's a postponement. Okay. Mr. Bliss?
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Cheryl just said.
Cheryl said it's a postponement as opposed to table, if we're going to do it on a date certain.
Amended with that language.
Madam Mayor, I know that this is a, I'm sure that everyone would want me to return to address that issue. And August the 9th happens to be my 35th wedding anniversary. My wife, so, so if I want to have a 36th wedding anniversary, I probably won't be able to be here on August 9. So, if you want to set a date certain, can we do it on a, on another date, please?
Mr. Bliss, the 23rd?
Yes. I will amend it to postponed as a language, and to the second meeting of August.
Okay. Do you want, well, do you want to table it indefinitely, just, and figure out a date? Or do you want to, do you want to postpone it to the 23rd?
I'd prefer I'd have a date certain.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark, the 23rd work for you?
I will continue to second that motion.
All right. Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Bliss to table the motion until August 23, which is not the next meeting, but the meeting after. And Councilwoman Clark has supported that. Discussion.
Your Honor.
Mr. Soltes.
So, I have a question, Counselor. How much is this going to cost us now? What is it going to cost for you to go back to the drawing board and make some changes or what have you? Can you give an estimate?
Mr. Sherman.
Can I give an estimate?
Do you know what this is? Do you know what this is?
Or City Manager?
It's hard.
I mean, because we had, there's times where we don't even do resolutions because it costs so much money. So what's this really going to cost?
What I'm going to do is I will talk to the individual council members, which of course is no charge at all. And then it's a matter of drafting the correct language, so an hour, two hours, something like that, it all depends. So I wouldn't say it's a great deal of money.
Right, no, I didn't imply, mean anything about you, I just wanted to know like an estimate, that's all.
I understand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right, Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote on this? It will be for August 23rd.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corbett.
No.
Councilwoman Geddings.
Yes.
Sorry. Mayor Pro Tem Soltis?
No.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Thank you. Motion carries, I believe.
Yes.
Is that four, two?
Yes.
All right. Up next, we have D3, report from the DPS Director, resolution to participate in the oak stem tree enhancement program. Mrs. Marsh, your report?
Yes, presented for council's consideration is a resolution to approve the city's participation in the oak stem tree enhancement program, which is a grant pilot program designed by Oakland County to decrease impervious surface area and increase the tree canopy in communities that make up the GWK drainage district. Staff and I recommend that council adopt the resolution as presented and authorize the public work supervisor to sign the application on the city's behalf.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council adopt the resolution for the oak stem tree enhancement program as presented and authorize the public work supervisor to sign the application on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, say no. Motion carries, thank you. Next up, D4, also the DPS Director, resolution to adopt the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner Stormwater Engineering Design Standards by Reference. Ms. Marsh?
Yes, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes Energy, also known as Eagle, is requiring all entities in Oakland County with the MS4 stormwater discharge permit to adopt by reference the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner Stormwater Engineering Design Standards. Staff and I recommend that council adopt the attached resolution, which adopts by reference the OCWRC Stormwater Engineering Design Standards.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
Can we read the resolution?
Sure.
Thank you.
Whereas the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's office has adopted the new stormwater engineering design standards in compliance with the recommendations of the Environmental Protection Agency for low-impact development practices, which the city of Madison Heights desires to adopt for application within the city as set forth herein. And whereas these standards at a minimum shall ensure consistent and straightforward standards to meet permit requirements, improve water quality and provide channel and infrastructure protection, promote volume-reducing low-impact development measures, and ensure long-term operation and maintenance of stormwater systems. And whereas the city of Madison Heights is committed to protecting water quality within our city and our local area through the administration and enforcement of these standards, and whereas the city of Madison Heights employs licensed engineers to perform review and approval of projects performed within the city in order to consider special circumstances applicable to each individual case together with local concerns that may, in the determination of the city engineers, require modification of the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office standards, being adopted herein while ensuring compliance with national and local standards. Now therefore, the city of Madison Heights hereby resolves that A, that this, as of the date of this resolution, the city of Madison Heights Council hereby adopts by reference the stormwater engineering design standards set forth by the Oakland County Water Resources Office, that the application of said standards shall in cases be subjected to review and approval by the city engineers, who make or allow exceptions to said standards as they determine appropriate in any specific case, and that this resolution as approved shall apply to all future amendments of these standards made by the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'm trying to find the language to adopt this resolution. I'll go back and see what's up. There was a lot of paper there.
Your Honor?
I move that we adopt the resolution to adopt the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner Stormwater Engineering Design Standards by Reference.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, so is this, is this talking about in relation to what the gentleman said about down this street, where it's a small little hole that water goes down?
It's restrictive.
Sir, sir, I know.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, I know. All right, so, yeah, all right, so Mr. Almus, could you address this, please? And I'll just, I'm going to make a statement here. Somebody sent me a picture of their street on the weekend, which I'm guessing looked like yours, and I said, yes, that's what mine looked like. And there is a reason for it. If, Mr. Almus, you could share with us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. No, to answer your question, no. This does not pertain to that. It's a stormwater design standard for containment, typically containment, and design for site development is what this initiative is. Something that the city already abides by. The only amendment here is that we're adopting the Oakland County Water Resource Commission design standards. It's a change in the language and the title. It simply is that. We already designed for the MS4 permit requirements. This is just a formality.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Almus. I will be asking you at some point to maybe give a report to address his issue, not this evening, sorry. I don't, I don't know, I don't know that it's, it's not really appropriate for this evening, but we can maybe add it on to a future report.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I will, I've got a specific referral during the round, and maybe we can work on it there, too. I have some thoughts that, when we get there, I'll mention it to you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion from council regarding this? All right, seeing none. Oh, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. And then next up is D5, which was added this evening, which is the tentative agreement with the patrol officers. I believe there is no report for this, so what is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of staff and approve the contract, which has been entered into with the...
Patrol officers.
I'm sorry, what's the acronym?
POA.
POA. Union, representing officers in the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mrs. Graffstein?
Mr. Graff.
I'll support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, say no. All right, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have under ordinances, G1, ordinance 2167, the zoning text amendment 21-03, the flagpole heights in areas in residential and non-residential uses with accessory buildings. This is the second reading. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, the city's building department has been receiving multiple applications to install tall poles in business districts that exceed the maximum permissible height for principal structures in such districts. There are concerns about the proliferation of such poles and concerns related to the placement of poles in pedestrian and vehicle areas. Existing standards for accessory buildings also do not differentiate between residential and non-residential uses. Some are more restrictive and require the zoning board of appeals, which could be otherwise streamlined by being reviewed administratively. Staffed worked with the planning commission to hold a public hearing and finalize the proposed amendment that includes standards for the accessory structures, including accessory buildings such as private garages, gazebos, detached garages, detached storage sheds, carports, et cetera, in all districts, utility structures, swimming pools, and flagpoles. Planning Commission recommends that city council approve the draft amendments, ordinance 2167, as presented upon second reading.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2167 on second reading.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett?
I support, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Please, Councilwoman Bliss.
Just to thank the rest of the planning commission for their due diligence on this. It doesn't seem like much, but we talked about flagpoles for 15 minutes, so this was very thoroughly discussed, and, you know, it was a problem that I didn't quite know was as big of a problem, but the unintended consequences of not doing anything were really, really big as we discussed it. So I'm super thankful for staff and for the other members of the planning commission who invested so much time, thought, and energy into this issue and helped us to clean up this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? All right, so yes, it was an incredibly long conversation, much longer than you would think, gave me thoughts of when we had the shopping cart conversation a year or so ago. But it was a good conversation, and right after we had that conversation, I was at a grand opening for someone who said to me, I want to put up a flag. And I said, well, you know, we've just been talking about that, so contact the city, they'll let you know what you can and can't do. So thank you, yes, to everyone who was involved in this. And if there is no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say no. Motion carries, thank you. That is the end of our regular meeting. We have our minutes. So what is the wish of council regarding the minutes of the July 12th meeting?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I move that we approve the city council meeting minutes of 7/12/2021.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support. Your Honor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Soltis. Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, say no. Motion carries. And with that, I will go to closing comments. Mr. Corbett, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, to the issue of the storm drains and the systems we've been dealing with, I remember, and I don't think I'm talking out of school here, we were resolving the lawsuit that was filed regarding the 2014 matter. And after everything was wrapped up, I questioned, I said at the time that I had learned, among other things, that this was supposedly a once-in-300-year storm, this 2014. I said, I was wondering with the changes in the environment and so on, at the time, even the Navy was talking about redesigning all the rules for combat in light of a changing environment. Not sure what that meant, but I do remember it sticking out at the time. And I said, is it possible that we may be dealing with this a little more often, at least a little more than one in 300? I said, I doubt that, you know, I suspect that Mr. Bliss's grandson, who will be on the council then, 40 years, will be dealing with it. But while it comes to find out that maybe things are changing a little sooner than that, downtown Detroit, the area in the New Center area and coming up towards the Cultural District, was hit with what was called a once-in-300-year storm. I believe it's the DSO facility has still got a couple of feet worth of water in the basement. The point of that is that for the sake of about six to eight miles, we almost had two one-in-300-year events within a few years. So my question is, and this is something that I would like to see our staff, Mr. Almus, to stop and take a careful, calculated look at this. Yes, I think, I think an initial report to the community about how the system works, how it's supposed to work, why we go with the restrictors on the storm drains right now, but I really would like the city to take a long view of modifications that we can make. Now, I understand that between the federal government, Jim, who's the, who's the water commissioner, Jim?
Jim Nash.
Jim Nash and his office, there are thousands of layers of people and organizations that are involved in moving water out of the community and safely out to the Great Lakes. But I would like to see the, take on a long-term study about what we can do to resolve some of these issues. Nothing that has to be implemented, and I don't mean to, we're going to go funding millions of dollars tomorrow, but I would like to, while we've still got a chance, while we're still drying the ankles, most of us, take a look at this and look what can be done down the line, because it's not going to get any better. I think that's reasonable. Other than that, thank you for the notes and the get well wishes and a few of the jokes that I got over the last couple weeks. I did a header at home on the steps, and, you know, I want to thank the fire department because I opened my eyes and instead of seeing my lovely bride, I saw a couple of the firemen asking me how I was doing, and I said, well, if I'm seeing you, I'm guessing not good. But all's well. It appears to have been an outlier and some bad luck. The arm is going to take a few more weeks to heal, but my pride will take longer, I suspect, so. Other than that, I'm all set, Your Honor. Thank you much, glad to be back. Glad to be back physically, too. It's my first time back, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Glad to have you back. Councilwoman Bliss?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Welcome back. Actually, thank, because I know that she was a big part in making it happen, but the rain gardens that we're installing at Civic, you know, that's a great solution, it's just costly. And having those all across the city, you know, soaking up that rain as it's coming down, so it's not sitting on pavement, or it's not in somebody's basement, is definitely the long-term solution. But I also would love to see the report, and then what is that going to cost, and where would we put it, and how do we do this strategically, and then just start chipping away at a long-term plan, because it's going to get worse. And as somebody who had council at that event, and it's really awesome to see the community rallying together to then put on that music festival. These things don't just happen in a city. Either we utilize tax dollars and that comes out of vital things like our public safety or our roads, or the community bands together, raises money, and helps create that happen, they will it into existence, and this is the latter. And so I was really encouraged, we raised about $1,200 in one night, we brought a lot of business to a fairly new restaurant, and I think it just, it was a win-win all across, and I loved it, I had a lot of fun, and I'm so thankful to everybody who came out, bid on the silent auctions, and gave us a little bit more money to work with for, without a stage, without any barriers. It's going to be a really cool event, and so I encourage everybody in the public to come out, to attend, and, you know, please, let everybody else know. We want to fill Civic Center Park as best as we can, because you don't get a lot of free music festivals, particularly in a year where we had our fireworks festival canceled. I'd love to see, you know, this park be filled and everybody of all ages having a good time, so. Really excited to see that, and again, thankful to everybody who's helped, either donated or helped fundraise the money to make that happen.
Thank you, Councilman Bliss. Councilman Geddings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This doesn't really have a lot to do with our city, more with the whole world. Four to five years, if you will, and participate and have that unity and sportsmanship. So far, everything seems to have gone well, and I just invite you guys all to try to watch some of the events on TV. some of the events on TV. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Geddings. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, thank you. At 5:30, the Assistant Attorney General was present, gave a presentation on ethnic intimidation, and it was very worthwhile. I'm glad that I was present to hear it. And the moral of the story, of course, is just to be nice, be kind, and be tolerant of other people. Life would be very boring if we were all exactly the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. The session will be going through a round of applications, I believe, at the second meeting in August. And that's all I have. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Councilman Clark.
Yes. I just want to address a couple of things that were brought to public comment. Vida, I, of course, stand behind you, and I am also disgusted at the cost of living at that new senior center, and I will be outspoken about it for you. Not only that, it won't surprise you to learn that Emily is one of the people who are championing some accessibility issues regarding housing for the Human Rights and Equity Commission. And I also just want to sort of put it in people's heads so that they can kind of get a perspective, because I myself come from poverty and still struggle with it. We're only just now going to start experiencing the real impact that COVID had on us. Our city, 60% of our income comes from tax revenue, from property taxes, and I can tell you from experience that it takes two years of not paying your taxes before they issue a levy on your home, and they try to take it, and we're approaching that mark now. So we're about to see a lot of people lose their homes, and we're seeing a lot of renters lose their places. I struggle myself to pay $1,300 a month for a 900-square-foot house that houses five people. So it is despicable and something that needs to be done. And I think one thing that maybe we can do as a community is reach out to some of our private landlords that are in town to bring this issue to discussion, maybe a town hall about how difficult it's going to be. A very large percentage of our community lives below the poverty line, and we're about to see them impacted more than we've ever seen since the recession and probably worse. And I would hate to see our low-income families be pushed out with the housing market as hot as it is, and people purchasing houses and getting them out of the hands of people who are losing them left and right. That's not what I want to see happen to my community. I definitely want to protect, protect those families and protect those homes and make sure we can keep people in them. So if we can come together as a community and come together as a government to think about how we can solve some of these problems, even intermittently, or even like find housing solutions for people, because our most vulnerable are going to be the ones affected the worst, and our low-income senior citizens, they can't get jobs, they can't. But a safe space at the Juneteenth Festival, it was a safe space, it was the first time I ever seen something like that offered at a public event, and I was extremely impressed by it, too. And then the last thing that I just want to cover is we were graced again with Sanita Donamani's presence. She's the Assistant Attorney General, and she's the head of the Hate Crimes Unit for the state of Michigan. She was back here for a second time today to discuss hate crimes, what they mean, what they look like, how to report them, what they don't look like, and it sparked great discussion among our residents who came to listen. And I, what I learned is that a lot of people see educational opportunities like this that we give in the city as something to be afraid of, like some of our residents were like, why is this, is an attorney general here talking about hate crimes? Like, is this an issue? And it was clear and evident that there's a disconnect between wanting to educate the community on things that are, problems we're experiencing all over the world, whether we're experiencing here or not, but we are experiencing them here. And then, again, how we can reach out and engage and educate our community without turning it into a nightmare situation that they need to be afraid of, because one of the residents.
I'm by the coalition, community coalition. So anyone who wants to go to golf, I'm going to try it. You can come and, you can laugh at me golfing, but it's, I think it's $120 for 18 holes. If you want to get ahold of Brooke Heisler, it's 248-5800. You know, dollars in there. So, and so if you want, you can call me. My number is pretty accessible, it's 248-219-6381. Or you can talk to the city manager, whoever, to get ahold of me. And so, again, I was going to do a raffle thing, but let's just do first come, first served, and then we'll, we'll do it that way. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Soltes. Yeah, I've got a few things this evening. I want to thank the Attorney General's Office, Sanita Donamani, for coming out here to speak to us in person. It was the first time she came and she addressed council, and it was very educational. I had a really good conversation with her a couple of months ago, asked her if she would do this when we returned to in person. And when, when I rebooted the ECC and then we set up the Bloom Project, it wasn't just to have attractive plants. It wasn't just so everything would look nicer than just some grass. It was also to help with the water runoff, but it's expensive. So we did get a grant, I was able to find a grant. Mrs. Marsh filled out the paperwork. We were able to get a grant, and we were supposed to get it last year, but because of COVID, it got delayed. I believe it's happening this year, and it's going to be a rain garden over at, over at Civic Center, over in the JC, over by the JC building. Two years ago now, I guess I went on a tour with the people who gave us the, who were giving us the grant for that, just looking at it, talking about everything. So over time, the more bio swales that we can plant, that that is something that we can look at and see. Potentially, we would have to change something, but I'm not the expert in that, and I rely on our experts to explain this to us. So thank you for bringing this up. I'm sorry you went through it. I know exactly where you live. I'm sorry you went through that. The safe space, I thought it was called a sensory tent, but regardless of what it's called, I think it's a great idea. I believe there is also an area for mothers to nurse their children as well. So I think that's great. The water park tickets, thank you, Mayor Protem Soltes, for offering that up. I believe, Councilman Bliss, did you come up with that idea? I think you were on the Parks and Rec that had come up with that idea. And that was such a good idea that I was really hoping the county would go ahead and they would actually do this for other cities, because I had friends in other cities who said, what do you mean, you pay $20 and you get these four tickets? How can I get that? And I said, you need to talk. He said, sure, we will do this, payment in lieu of taxes, if you do the subsidized housing. And then, once again, this was something that was out of our control. It went to the state, and they were denied at the state level. So unfortunately, there are a lot of things that are out of our control. This is 133-unit complex, so I know that there's much more than 133 people in the city who are looking for something else. And right now, the planning commission is reviewing and we're revising our ordinances because it just, it's bureaucracy. It takes time, and we want to make sure that we're doing it properly. We started this a few months ago. You know, we had the flagpole today, but these things all take time, and you have to remember that the rules that are out there, at the time, they made sense, and, you know, you review them, and you say, this rule still makes sense, we're going to keep doing it, or we say, you know what, this is now outdated, we need to make a change. And as our demographics are changing, we need to make sure that we've changed our ordinances so that it can allow them more flexibility, because it's wanted by not just our seniors, our older residents, it's also looking, looking at younger families who, because of the increase in prices, are struggling. So we're looking at that, and I'm meeting with developers to see who we can partner with to bring in this new middle housing, to meet the needs of pretty much everyone. But we're not there, and we're not the only city that's not there. Other cities are slowly starting to put this in, and, and we're working on it. So haven't forgotten about you. It's, you know, it's just the way it is, and, you know, progress takes time, changes are slow. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Our next meeting is going to be August 9th. We'll be here in chambers at 7:30. The time is now 9:26. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
I said truth, I said facts tonight.
You, Baba?